It's council comment. I share with you all some comments that I want to give tonight, but before I do so, I want to open it up for you all. And Mr. Villio, can I go to you first, please? Council comments?
No.
You said no, I said okay. That was quick.
Thanks for... So, there's a lot, there's a lot to say, a lot that I feel, but a few words that I know how to put out correctly for what I want to say. For me, I've heard, I've learned a lot over the last week. I've spoken with, with many different people. I attended the rally on Saturday, which was very peaceful, very civil, which I'm thankful for, which is the civility that I love about Talbot County. We've received a lot of correspondence about the Talbot Boys statue. I've been told things of tear it down, I've been told remove it, I've been told to fix it, to complete it, to add the other names to it, I've been told to add another statue next to it. I've been given lots of different recommendations, lots of different ways of correcting, of changing history. I've done a lot of research and looked around at different monuments around us and what Chester Tab has laid out, how similar in style that can be to what we have, which is a very fair one with both sides on it. It's a great memorial. If you haven't been to Chester Tab, recommend checking out all of them. A lot of these phone calls that I had, a lot of the discussions, the emails that come in just over the last couple of days. We could have taken executive action tonight, I assume, to make a decision. Most properly, it would have been put on the agenda, which would have been Friday by noon. And I don't, I don't have a plan of what to do with any of those options, whether just leave it in rubble in the yard, or complete it, or what, or move it, or who leave it and accept it. This is obviously a very large issue for the community. There's a lot of respect that I am paying and that I owe to our current council members who've been through one or two times already hearings, where they've, where they've received a lot of information. And they've made decisions in the past based off of what they've heard and felt from the community. So, at this time, there is a change, and I'm enjoying what I'm seeing. I can't, I'm from Talbot County, you know, my father was a surgeon in Talbot County, my mother was a teacher here. I grew up in an incredible lifestyle. I knew everybody, everybody treated me great, you know, I was very fortunate. Then when I ran for office, all of a sudden, I came across people that absolutely despised me without even knowing who I was. And that can't even relate at all to what an African American has to go through, and I recognize that. So, you're going to continue to hear a lot about this Talbot Boys statue, obviously, from this council. Many of us plan to address it some tonight. So, nobody's sitting back on this. This is definitely a time for change, in my opinion. And you know, Juneteenth coming up here next week, there's, this is a significant time in my life, and I'm at 39 years, I'm very excited for it. So, we'll see, see how things go, and next time, I'll probably prepare a speech.
You get your comment, Mr. Villio. Mr. Lesher, can I go across if I'm over to you and the comments?
Thank you, Mr. Pack. This Saturday, I attended the large gathering also in the courthouse square protesting police abuse in the killings of African Americans across America by, by those who want to protect us. This council approved the public assembly permit for that event, as did the town of Easton. And I want to thank the organizers and participants for, as Mr. Villio characterized, a peaceful, a civil, I'll add a diverse and nonviolent demonstration. I also want to compliment the Easton Police Department for its preparation and communications to keep the peace, and our own Talbot County Sheriff for his presence and his intervention. I was pleased to see a number of my colleagues of this council present handing out water and staff present at that event and the one following, the following day in St. Michael's. I was questioned about the wisdom of the council's decision to grant the public assembly permit, and I'm elated, but not at all surprised, that the fears of violence and outside infiltrators were completely unsubstantiated. I found in that event particularly moving the protracted moment of silence. One of the largest groups that I have ever seen on the courthouse square, on bent knee, keeping silence, to the extent that we could hear the birds singing. This moment silently, yet powerfully spoke volumes about our community, and I'm proud of that community. On Saturday, me, as part of that, heard a call to revisit the Talbot Boys monument. We've heard more tonight, we've received the emails, we've seen the social media, we've seen it in the newspaper. To revisit the Talbot Boys monument and its appropriateness on the courthouse square. Since that time, we've received all this additional, most of them calling for its removal. We are reminded of the history of this monument, how it was erected not only needed after the aftermath of the Civil War, more than half a century later, at a height of overt racial discrimination in America. Its sponsors pointedly excluded memorializing Union soldiers from Talbot County, some of whom were black. They wanted people to know regardless of who lost the war, who was now in charge in Talbot County, and it included those who fought against their native mayor and against the United States. We've been told how this monument gives a knock in the stomach of some of our neighbors as they must walk by this powerful symbol of racism on their way into the halls of justice that is our county courthouse. However we revisit this discussion today, we must, we cannot simply ignore this issue. The time has come to remove it.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher. Ms. Price, I'm going to go over to you for comment.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by thanking the great citizens of Easton and Talbot County for their positive, peaceful responses over the last several weeks. We have witnessed tragedy, and it is a tragedy when anyone's life is senselessly taken away. What I am thankful for is the unique community that we live in, and that we can all exist beyond the hatred that many other towns and cities have demonstrated. The council has to thank our law enforcement departments for staying on the job, for putting the needs of others above themselves, for their unyielding empathy and positive support during this time. Law enforcement, emergency management, our medical teams have risen to the unbelievable challenge that we all face. To those in the law enforcement profession, you have blazed a path on how other law enforcement persons can and should handle themselves. Your attention to diversity, oop, apply. Your attention to diversity and inclusiveness must be commended. My heart goes out to Andy, Clay, Frida, and the Emergency Management Operations Team and all the county staff for their tireless commitment to the operation of the county during these unprecedented, unprecedented times of the pandemic and the senseless taking of a life. We mourn for those who lost their lives needlessly, who have experienced the stress and uncertainties of losing their businesses or their livelihoods, and those who continue to struggle to remain in business. We can be thankful for our citizens' thoughtful and caring response to this perfect storm of events, and we can pray that the tide may be moving in the right direction on some of these difficult events. Our focus should be on the well-being and the betterment of our families here in Talbot County. Our duty as your elected officials is to express your needs. Let us focus our energies on helping the individuals in need and position the county to best weather and conquer these seemingly insurmountable challenges. You have placed your faith in us to lead, and we will do so and have done so without prejudice or self-gratification. And this is not the time to grandstand for personal gain or to give in to emotion or undue pressures, but to put the well-being of our neighbors first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Price. Ms. Price, President, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I'm like Mr. Villio, I'm just, you know, we just want to comment on some things that are on my heart and my gut. You know, there, there probably isn't a person on the planet that, that looked at that TV screen and felt horrified. I sure did. I didn't know really what to make of it, other than just a senseless person that, that was supposed to be helping the public. And it turned out that, obviously, this person here has some real, real problems. And not only that, not only that, I was horrified with the people standing beside him, that I was, I just couldn't imagine. And really, what brought to my mind is that my experience, I've been in the, given, given what I am as a firefighter, and when I looked at that, you know, I've been in the fire department for 36 years, and I'm there to help people, save people, you know, and I, and I couldn't imagine being in that, in that moment and not trying to help get that officer off of him. I couldn't imagine that. So, when we train, and I thought about this, when you train, when you train to save a person, or you protect a person, when you save them, you don't see color, you see action that helps somebody. And that's what struck me. We definitely are at a moment where there needs to be a huge amount of training and a process of training, because my mind works to save that person and not brutalize and treat that person in a bad manner or kill them, you know. My mind isn't that way. There is time, I agree, there, it's a, it's a moment in time right now, that it is going to be some change. I'm okay with that, I'm for that. We have lived in a phenomenal community, all my heritage is here in this community. There's not many people that I haven't worked with, worked for, helped, been on hundreds and thousands of fire calls to help people. And now is the time, maybe, to go to another level and a next step. Obviously, this statue is, is, you know, been a source of talk for many, many, many years. Maybe there is some options that we can look at, but I'd like to, I'd like to have some time to think about it myself. I don't want, you know, this whole thing has happened in the last couple of weeks, so I really want to be able to do the right thing, and the right thing for Talbot County. And, you know, I really appreciate, you know, I was at the rally too, and I was handing out water, and I was looking, listening to people, very calm, very, you know, I commend the, the Joe's man, the sheriff's department, and the mayor, and, and the chief on doing a great job and letting people vent what they want to vent, okay? And that, and that's what, that's what it's all about. It's all about people expressing their views, okay? And there's nothing wrong with that. There is one thing I do have a problem with. There's one thing that, that, it's a sore subject. If you have a sign, I'd like for you to take it back with you and not the hundreds of signs. It would, you know, it, it causes disruption, it's a little bit more respect, I think, if you, if you, if you bring something, you take it with you. That's just my view. I know it's a, it was a touchy subject when it comes to all these signs and land them all around and stuff. But, you know, hey, we got through it, it was very peaceful, I'm like you, Mr. Lesher. You could, you know, there was a moment in time where everybody was together that day. Everybody, everybody was really sitting wavelength. But I'm glad I went, I'm glad I experienced it, because a lot of people are afraid of that kind of stuff, they really are. And it's nothing to be afraid of, it's, if anything, it's an enjoyment with everybody gathering and thinking for that moment for people that have been, you know, in a bad situation and been mistreated. So, I think we need to think through this as a council. I think, Mr. Pack, the President, I really want to commend you with a lot of things that in, in, in creating maybe some new opportunities for us, and looking at this, looking at this in a different perspective. So, I really appreciate the callers calling in and voicing their opinions. I don't take any of that personal whatsoever, never will, never, never did, and never will, because everybody, that's why we have these comments, and that's why we live in a society where you can say your piece and move on. And that, and that's why I feel like it was a, it was a great moment in time, Saturday, and there might be more, you know? And the other thing, the last thing I want to say is I really appreciate the people that are reaching out and emailing me. I'll do my best to acknowledge you. You take the time to write the emails, I try to make the time to acknowledge you that you have written me. So, with that being said, I really appreciate the last couple of weeks of people contacting me, and you're welcome to call me to talk through this with me, and any ideas that might be on your mind, I'm open to it, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you for spelling it. I have a few remarks here, so I'm going to ask the council to bear with me as I read through this. Only I do not prepare formal written comments, full council comment, but this time, I felt a deep need to do that. This has weighed on me these past seven days, watching the news, watching the image of Mr. Floyd's final moments upon his earth, way has weighed on me very, very heavily. We attended the rally, saying the demonstration on Saturday, several council members were there. We heard, we saw for ourselves the peaceful demonstration of these young people, and I wrote, tip I had to the young people who organized this, for the manner where they conducted themselves, there was no damage to public property, sure that there was a true science behind around the courthouse lawn, but there was no great concern to me. We got those picked up by the end of the day. So, let me try to get through this as best I can. It's hard for me to imagine that any reasonable person could have viewed the arrest of George Floyd and not be appalled by the actions of the Minneapolis Police Department. For nearly nine minutes, one assailant placed his knee near the base of Mr. Floyd's neck, including two minutes and 53 seconds when he was non-responsive, while another knelt on his back and rear cage. And if there wasn't enough force to restrain Mr. Floyd, a third assailant knelt on the back of his legs. While these three crushed Mr. Floyd into the city street, a fourth complaint stood over there and looked up and down the street as if he was waiting on an approaching bus. Watching this behavior from people who are supposed to serve and protect the public is so frustrating and upsetting to me. I have asked who is at the gate to help individuals who have so little regard for human dignity to become sworn officers. I cannot help screaming, there must have been other incidents, there must have been other citizen complaints, there must have been red flags to alert the command staff that they had a loose cannon in their hands. But often, when we see these type of abuse of powers, it is systemic of a deeper problem in the hiring and psychological evaluation of prospective employees. Police training tactics focus more on how to inflict bodily harm and restrain an individual, and less emphasis on how to de-escalate and evaluate the situation from a mental health or public safety approach, and not as a current military action. I have often said that there are bad police officers, just as there are bad auto mechanics. After 25 years in public safety, I have worked with many good and decent officers, dedicated men and women who work with the community and not against it, officers who work 10-hour shift and then go out and coach football until sunset, officers who will load a group of kids in a bus and take them to an amusement park or to a baseball game. Yes, just like there are good HBAC technicians, there are good police officers. But unlike an auto mechanic or technician, officers have a sworn duty to protect all the people regardless of race or gender. When I, when we see the death of George Floyd, it brings back images of Pat Garner and Tamira Rice and Breonna Taylor, to name just a few black men and women who were killed by police officers. The name of the city may change, but the characters do not, do not. White male police officers assaulting and killing unarmed black citizens. This nation has recently experienced two public health emergencies, as we continue to deal with the opioid and coronavirus epidemics. But police brutality against African-American community has been a public health crisis for decades. There has not been a national movement to address the problem. The federal government has allocated millions of taxpayer dollars, and rightly so, to stop the death toll attributed to opioid abuse and the deadly COVID-19. But there must be an equal urgency to address police brutality as a national health crisis. Several states, including Maryland, have recently passed the Justice Reinvestment legislation to defund correctional institutions and reinvest those dollars into social economic programs to help train citizens for employment in the community and not behind prison bars. An equal commitment from legislators must be undertaken to stop the spread of black deaths at the hands of people who are sworn to protect them. I have been asked recently about Talbot County's commitment to racial diversity and whether a task force needs to be created. Let me say first, I am proud of the county's record on fair and equitable hiring and the promotion of minority candidates. County staff under the direction of the county manager has engaged in cultural competency training in 2014 with Chesapeake, with the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. In FY17 and FY18, the county funded the cultural competency strategic plan facilitated by Dr. Stuart Bowns. Before the COVID-19 shutdown, county, county participated in the careerless conversation beyond diversity training sponsored by the Talbot Family Network in partnership with the Talbot County Public Schools. The Talbot County Sheriff's Department also joined in the cultural competency training, and the deputies also participated in the county's conversation on race. Over the last five years, Sheriff Campbell has hired 21 new employees, of which 10 were minorities, five African-Americans, one Hispanic, and four females. And to his credit, Sheriff Campbell hired the first Spanish-speaking deputy in the history of the department. While I am proud of the steps we have taken to bring diversity training to our staff and our hiring and qualifying our candidates, there's still work to be done. And the last thing that I want to do is rest in our arms. We can do better, and we must be better as the citizens we serve expect and deserve nothing less than our best. The public demonstration in Easton on Saturday was amazing to witness, the movement of the young citizens peacefully assembling and calling out the names of George Floyd and the others who have died at the hands of police officers. It was Dr. Martin Luther King who said, "The riot is the voice of the unheard." While what we saw on Saturday certainly was not a riot, it was hard not to hear the voices and to ask yourself, what can I do to be able to have change in my community? And I certainly hope that each of the participants of the demonstration on Saturday will engage in some way to move the needle to create and implement actionable items that will improve the health and well-being of the people around them. As I thought about the voices and cries for change, I too had to ask myself, how can I help to ensure that diversity stays an important part of the county's policies and regulations? With that thought in mind, I am asking the Talbot County Council to consider the formal request to enhance diversity of county government and respond to the voices of the people. First, I am requesting that the county manager produce a report within 30 days to the county council describing what diversity training, seminars, or work groups county staff has attended in the last two fiscal years, and what additional action items are being implemented to maintain positive and diverse workforce. Second, I am requesting that the county council work to create a diversity statement to be included in the county's employee handbook. Such a statement should outline the county's commitment to create and maintain that diverse workforce, a place where diverse ideas and thoughts are a welcome part of the work environment. Third, my third request was originally to ask this body, the county council, to consider placing a question on the 2020 presidential election ballot, which would ask the citizens of Talbot County to decide if the Talbot Boys statue should be removed. It is no secret that this council, as well as prior council, has been asked to relocate the Talbot Boys statue. The idea of a ballot question was to put the decision back to the people from which it came more than 100 years ago. Yet, after consulting with the Office of Law, it was discovered that in order for such a question to be placed on a state election ballot would require a vote of the General Assembly, and all ballot questions must be submitted to the state election board no later than July 31st. As it appears that these two factors will not permit the question to be placed on the 2020 presidential election ballot, it is therefore my request that this council consider a resolution to prohibit all statues depicting persons to prohibit all statues depicting persons, signs, or symbols of military actions on a courthouse grounds. The resolution would not prohibit monuments listing the names of Talbot County veterans of war. The fourth request is for the council to consider a ballot question to change from an unlimited term of office to a term limited council. Term limits would be one way to ensure new people and new ideas come onto the council on a more regular basis. It is recommended that two consecutive terms be set as the new limit, and that existing council members will be required to wait one term before being eligible to take the seat for the council. My last request of this council is to consider sending a letter to our federal representative seeking their support of the Justice in Policing Act of 2020. This federal act is a comprehensive approach to hold police agencies accountable, change the culture of law enforcement, and build trust between law enforcement and our communities. These recommendations are made to this council in the hope that Talbot County will always build a place for people of different race, religion, and cultures are welcome to live, to work, and to participate freely. Thanks for your support, hearing me out.